We'll just kind of run it.
Meet and come order, please. Pass the gavel. Over to the ABC.
Okay, who wants to go?
I guess I got stuck with that. So, all the meeting do order first, conservation commission.
Is that the thing we got moved? Just emailed to us?
Yeah.
I have copies that you can pass.
Oh, alright. Everybody has it. Unless it's something different.
No, it's just easier to read. Like your phone. It's good for me.
I see you found a hot seat.
Yep.
So, you will notice the two columns to the right have the current year's budget and the proposed budget for 2018-19, and they are identical. And I can address details on any of them to the extent that you would like to have me do so.
What was the change? You get 2017-18 and then the request, we're not through 18. But what was 1617 and what was spent?
1617... I don't have in my head. I believe it was $1,000 lower because we had some cash accumulation to carry forward. We didn't need as much that year as we did the subsequent year.
Looks like you might have gotten $4,000 in fiscal 16, $3,500 in fiscal 15.
It should be inside your...
I know.
We just started out. It is inside. It should be in there, right?
Yeah.
That gives me the beginning.
No, it says TO, no, it says annual budget.
Request for appropriation was.
Right below the beginning.
Okay, so 16, it was $6,000.
Well, 16, no, 16, it was $4,050. And the employee has $3,500.
Oh.
Where else?
Well.
Good evening, sir. Is there more there?
Yeah, you can sit anywhere you want. Hello. Nice to meet you.
It's Cord.
See Cord?
Yeah.
Cord.
Yeah.
Do you know everybody quick?
I'm the folks from last year, hello.
That's Brian.
Brian. Everyone else is from another.
Hi, I'm Bill.
We're talking about the conservation commission.
Well, one of the questions I had built right now, this sheet that we have is through October 18th. And supposedly you have $19,000 sitting there, so it keeps growing, but you don't seem to be spending as much as you're getting for appropriation. So I guess my question is, what's the plans for the $19,000 that are sitting in your account at Palma or as of the 18th?
Well, a portion of that, roughly $3,500, I believe, is in the Dave Allen Memorial Fund. And so that is something that was contributed by residents in town in his memory. And we can draw on that when we don't have budgetary authorization, let's say, for a particular line item. And I guess the thing I would say with respect to the current balance is, we have found over the years that it's very difficult to predict what our needs are going to be for land stewardship, for the management of town-owned properties. Where, for instance, on the Joe Ford Wildlife Preserve, I think when we took that easement initially and then when Joe ultimately deeded the property to the town, our expectation was that, yes, we would need to go out and monitor that on a yearly basis, but we didn't anticipate that there were going to be management costs that we would incur. We have since found that there are significant costs with regard to invasive plants, particularly along Garrity Road where Japanese knotweed was just taking over. And the commission felt it was really essential to try to get that under control. So we've been working on that for the last couple of years, this current year particularly. And we have, over the next several months, a plan to develop long-term management for the fields that Joe wished to have kept open. They have been being encroached upon by trees that are falling in, by invasive shrubs that are growing in, and it has gone from about 14 acres of open fields at the time Joe granted the easement to about seven acres now. So we're trying to devise a plan for how we keep that basically at the level that Joe had maintained it when he deeded it to us. So that's just one instance where our expectations were greatly underestimated in terms of what has proven to be actually needed.
Did you know how much that would be? I know that Ann's working on that, but just in terms of, we went from about $7,000, your particular thing, in 2000 into 2015, and then at the end of 2016, it's almost $10,000. At the end of fiscal 17, it was real under $14,000. So it keeps growing, so I'm not sure how much you're allocating toward that. I don't remember what, because Ann's looking for...
We don't have a figure at this point.
Because I think this is looking like some of the other commissions that we have, that their balances keep going up, we keep giving them money from taxation, but then you don't spend it all. So, the same thing we did with the Heritage Commission, they have even way more money than you do. They haven't asked for money in the last two years. So I guess my question is, for that $14,000, what do you have plans for that? How much is for the Joe Ford invasive species or whatever else you have planned, so?
I would expect something in the range of $5,000, but that's purely a wild estimate at this point.
Thanks.
No questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I think we're all set, aren't we? So thank you, Bill.
Very good, thank you.
So you didn't get the plague, huh? Weren't you in Madagascar?
We were, yeah. And we had been notified before we went that there was an outbreak of plague that was earlier and appeared to be larger than their annual one.
I didn't realize they had an annual.
They do have, but only maybe 100 deaths.
100 deaths.
This year, instead of it being just boop on it, it was pneumo on it. And that affects the lungs and is spread by people coughing. So we avoided crowded marketplaces and other such locations.
Well, did you have a big time?
We had a wonderful one.
Oh, good.
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you. Oh, hi, Linda, come on up.
Okay.
Turn to my page.
Ready to go, babe?
Generation 7.
Well, in the elections, the reason the, I think I put numbers on the side, the reason the first-line moderator salary, we added the assistant moderator to it, and there are three elections as opposed to two elections in this year 19. Same with the next line on the supervisory checklist, three elections as opposed to. The next line, the ballot clerks were reduced because we moved the moderator from that, the assistant moderator, sorry, to the first line. Our meeting expense stayed the same. Legal notices went out because Costmore put it in the paper, and the supervisors have to notify when they meet, and they're obviously going to be meeting one more time because there were three elections as opposed to. Same with the printing of ballots, three elections versus two. And everything, oops, what's that, training? The moderator, the assistant moderator went to training this year, and they had to pay for it, so that's why I added the money in for training. My wish stays the same, postage, meals, obviously, well, they, we don't seem to be paying, spending as much on meals, so that's why I reduced it from, oh, 17, and then 18 and 19 stayed the same. The only change for the town clerk, tax collector, was, oh, again, legal notices, Costmore posted them in the paper. Everything else stayed the same. It's wonderful having Liz. Sorry, no. She's still in training, but she's doing great, so.
She's a nice lady.
Very nice, yes, yeah.
And what?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, and how long before she can be there by herself? There's a...
Oh, gosh, by herself, I would say probably another four months. She is going to be going to the municipal agent training, and then there's also a right-to-know training that she has to go before she can start doing motor vehicles. But she has been doing the taxes that have been coming in, and she's been very helpful.
Allows you to have a couple of seconds during the day to do something else?
Yeah, well, it's tax time, and so she spends the whole day putting in the taxes.
There always seems to be a line when I come. You guys have been...
No, I'm gonna say call ahead, you can call. Yeah. But once she gets up in training, the good news is that line, because that's one of the issues, is, yes, one person could probably be in the office, which I was, but if you become, if you have one problem, that'll start the line, because you've got to, at least with two people in there, if one is having a problem, the other can take the customer.
Keith, do you have any information in terms of how many people are using the online payment versus coming in to visit you?
I don't have it on me. I can do a little research, but online, I'd say, has increased, it's kind of nice. I would say we average, middle of the month, probably three or four a day, or I've done it overnight. Busy time, I'd say maybe up to five a day. More people are using their card when they come in, you know, they don't want to pay the fee, and a lot of people go, I don't care, and they use it. So there are more people using it. So it is, it's a benefit to them, and people, I think, have appreciated it, they don't appreciate the fee. We're just telling them, we can't, the town can't absorb the fee, so it has to be passed on.
And remind me, how much is that?
2.79% of the total.
And that's just something we pass on to them, that's not, we're not making money on that?
We're not making money, we're not spending money. Using the ACH, the online transfer bank-to-bank and credit cards, any fees, the customer pays, it does not. The town could, if you took it to the town meeting and, you know, proposed it as a Warren article, but I would vote no, because I don't want my tax dollars paying for someone else's credit cards. But that's my personal opinion. You want to use your card, that's fine, go ahead, pay.
And point is, at least you can tell them, we're just passing on fees that were your charge, we're not making money.
And that's what we do. And they, some people go, oh, okay, some people grumble a little, but, you know, if you don't want to use it, then, you know, don't use it. In a nice way, not in a... All right, thank you, Bill, I don't say anything.
Thank you.
Well, it says right online when you go to do it, it's going to be this is the fee that, yeah, so it's...
You'd be surprised sometimes.
They can choose to do it or not.
Yes, and some people don't care. I had a guy that paid, what was it, it was $1,000 or something on a registration, and I said it's 2.7, and I just, I don't know, it came to $50, $60, and he goes, that's fine. Okay.
It's the same at the state level for things like renewing LLC license or something like that, so I think it's pretty common practice, at the state place.
Yeah. And I think people are now, because we've been doing it for three years now, I think. And I've seen, as time's gone on, people, I think, are accepting that or something, because more and more people are using the cards in the office.
$200, it went up. Yeah, okay, I see it.
It's about the...
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
We're all good.
All good.
Well, thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will, I'll get, no, 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 let me write that down.
Can you explain that jacket to me?
Honestly? Well, actually, yes, I can. Frank was honor guard, which they, it's a group of people that take the handicapped or older veterans to Washington DC. And you get trained in a la, well, he bought a jacket, but when he got home, it wasn't the right size, so I inherited it. So that's how, and interestingly enough, he did it once, and he can't do it anymore because he's too old.
He's old to take them.
My father went on that.
Yeah, no, he said it was quite an experience, but now that he's, he's turned 70, he can't, he can't do it.
He can't do it.
Oh, wow.
So now can people take him?
Yeah, right.
If he's a veteran?
He wouldn't find that amusing, I don't think.
Thank you.
But that's the jacket. Thank you. Have a good Thanksgiving, Bill.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, now we have the star, right? I'll let her put it that way.
Nobody.
So, what I handed out tonight is the update to the selectmen's budget. We received the guaranteed maximum rates from the health trust, so that is reflected in the pages that we just received. And we received rates from Primax, when before they were estimates on the increase rate. And in all cases, the new rates are lower than what I had estimated. So on the health insurance, we're looking at no more than a 0.6% increase on the health insurance. Dental insurance went up 2.3%, but we had not seen an increase in that in a couple of years. The unemployment rate went down, our workers' comp went down because we continue to have a very good experience modification factor. Last year, we were at 0.96%, this year, we're at 0.86%, so that's a good thing. Our property liability rate went up, although again, not as much as I had anticipated. And what you need to remember with the property liability insurance is that part of that rate, or actually, a lot of that rate, is based on wages. So when wages go up, the premium goes up.
Average weekly wage.
So I'm just gonna maybe quickly walk you through the rest of it. There are actually, other than the insurance numbers, there isn't really anything that stands out. Most of the budgets are either the same, a little bit lower, a little bit under. So on the first page, page one, under Finance Administration Office Supplies, we're just looking for some more money as a reflection of what we've been spending over the past few years. We also supply departments and commissions and committees and others, other than just the town hall staff. So a lot of these numbers reflect uses by other departments, committees, and commissions. For example, photocopy, the use of the photocopier, we don't charge departments for the use of that. But actually, if you go to the next page, you'll see that the photocopy costs are down. We now own the copier. So we moved into it, and I determined that the copier was working fine, it really didn't make sense to enter into another lease purchase agreement, so we paid off the small amount that we owed, and now we just pay for maintenance agreement every month, so that's a cost savings. If you see under Computer Services, last year, we had put some money in relatively late in the process for our scanning project, which we anticipate is going to start after the first of the year. So I cut that back, but still, I think I included about $12,000 in that line to continue the scanning project. Otherwise, that line is for Comcast and the Back Bay Maintenance Agreement, who is our IT.
When you say the canning, or the scanning continues, we started scanning?
No, we're going to, we're gonna, we're planning on starting the project in January.
Physically scanning?
Well, putting out an RFP, getting the company that's going to do it, and then doing the work.
Because we had an offer from a company, right?
Right, right, but that was just one company. And I've since talked to a couple of other municipalities, talked to a couple of them yesterday at the conference, and they've used different providers and put RFPs out, so I think that that would be the way to go. It's a big project.
Yeah.
So again, we're gonna, we're gonna start with the assessing records and see how it goes. And you need to remember, it's not just a matter of scanning in the records, you also have to have a computer system that holds the records, makes them searchable, because that's certainly one of the reasons to do it. And then you need to keep scanning, which we will want to do in-house, but there's going to have to be a system set up in order to enable us to do that.
Actually, for a while, you're going to be working off two systems, aren't you? The current one, which, I mean, just keeping track of what's on the digital side versus... Right.
So, yeah, we intend to be moving forward with that project. There's a slight increase in assessing, that was just a contract increase. They had been staying level for a couple of years, and now we've just seen a small increase. Legal expenses hasn't changed overall, I just kind of swapped where I allocated them based on what the building has been looking like. We talked about the personnel costs, the health insurance costs. Again, a reminder that these health insurance costs are based on the people that we have right now, with the plans that we have right now, with a buffer, we just put in the cost of a family plan as a buffer in the event someone stops using the buyout. Right now, we have four employees using the buyout, and that is a big cost savings, a big cost savings.
Does this reflect the new position the police want?
Yes, and this reflects the new position for the police department. It also reflects the desire of the library trustees to add insurance for their 35, well, actually, I think they're intending, no, they're gonna keep that employee, I think, at 35 hours, but that's also in the budget.
And health insurance still went down, I'm agreeing.
Well, remember, we took the costs for the library out.
Okay.
So, along with other ancillary personnel costs, so now I think the library, that was another updated spreadsheet I gave you tonight, I think it's somewhere around $46,000 for the library, overall, retirement, and so on and so forth. Retirement rates have gone up, the retirement system increases the rates every two years. I was gonna say, they do an analysis of the rates, but the effect of that is that the rates go up every two years. The group one, which are just your basic municipal employees, didn't go up too much, police and fire, I think, went up 2% and 3%, 3% and 4%, they went up quite a bit. So what are they, Julie? What's fire, is it like at 30%? Fire is, I will tell you that, I don't want to dispute, because I think fire is at 31 something, 31, yeah. Fire is at 31.89%. It had been 29.16. Police is now 29.43%. It had been 26.38%. So... And the municipal part, and everybody else? Municipal is now 11.38, it had been 11.17, so that didn't go up too much, but it's the police and fire. And obviously, the police department has the most employees, so you see a big impact when those rates go up. Government buildings, there's a little bit of a change there, mostly because we went from a full-time and a part-time maintenance staff to two part-time people. And actually, you would see a cost savings in the health insurance, because that removed someone from the health insurance.
How's that working out? Because we talked a lot about it last year.
Seems to be working fine. The Energy Committee, you already heard their presentation, they agreed to take out of the operating budget items that were actually capital expenses, so that, you'll see the $8,400 savings in the operating budget. I increased the heat for the town hall complex, propane prices have increased over the last year, so I put an increase in for that. We talked about the property liability insurance, it went up, although it did not go up as much as I had estimated it. The Form 199, other general government, this is a little goofy. The Select Board has been using this account as a wage pool, which I think you're aware of. Last year, the wage pool was $45,000, I just put in $45,000 again this year, although the board has not had a conversation about that. But the reason you don't really see costs in the other budgets is because it gets allocated across all of the departments. So it somewhat skews this set of budget lines in terms of what the increase and the decrease might be, so actually, at the last, on the last page, I backed out $45,000.
It's like some of this would be in police.
Because it would be in police, it would be in fire, it would be across all the departments. And I don't know, again, the board has not had a conversation about the wage pool or COLAs. I will say that I saw something recently that said that the CPI is up, depending on which one you look at it, anywhere between 2 and 2.7%. You already heard from the social service agencies, just again, a reminder, Strafford Nutrition Meals on Wheels is a new request to us this year. General assistance for this year, I kept it the same, although you will note that fiscal 18, there was a large increase in rent assistance. Over fiscal 17, we have talked about this, I think we talked about it when we were doing the social service agencies, there is, there's just nowhere to put people. So it's, and people are having a hard time... So it's, and people are having a hard time finding places to live, so we're continuing-
It's getting worse.
Yeah, we're continuing to see people coming in looking for rent assistance. Most of the electrical and fuel assistance is handled by CAP, but we do occasionally help people out with that.
Can I ask, so have you changed your guidelines about rent assistance?
We changed the guidelines.
Well, I don't know, I perhaps thought there was a cap on how much the town would pay for rent.
Well, it's supposed to be based on prices in the area.
Market, yeah.
But the market prices, I don't know if you looked at what prices, I mean, I saw, you know, an apartment in Newmarket, a one-bedroom apartment in Newmarket is twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah. Got some people, some, it's a husband, wife, and two children in a motel, and is charging them three hundred dollars every two days.
And we're paying for this?
No, we're not paying. I'm just saying that it's very, right now, for some reason, it's just terrible out there.
Is there an expectation that that will change?
No.
No?
No.
How long is, what is the expectation, Charles, how long will it be?
That's a really good question. I mean, theoretically, maybe it's forever. I mean, the goal is to get people off of assistance, number one, and then the second goal is to find other ways for them, in other places, for them to get assistance. Towns are supposed to be the last resort, but again, increasingly, you'll see that they're coming here for rent assistance, because there's just nowhere to go. And I think it's even not unusual in Lee for us to pay seven hundred or eight hundred dollars a month on someone's behalf, but that's what the-
I mean, if you can get them on Section Eight housing rolls, they're still gonna wait months before they even-
Years.
Get an opportunity, depending on where it is.
To get on Section Eight, it takes years?
Years.
Oh my lord.
It's a long, it's terrible.
Because there's nowhere for anybody to go. Again, there is just no affordable housing, or I shouldn't say no, but very limited affordable housing. And especially in the seacoast, real estate is again through the roof, and the more that happens, the more people with properties tend to renovate them to higher rental income. And then just the last item, obviously, the interest on the bonds for the safety complex and the transportation come down every year as we get ever closer to paying those bonds off, which again, will be in twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. Revenues, I just wanna talk about revenues, because again, just wanna emphasize, the more money we can bring in that are not tax dollars, the less taxes we have to collect. Revenues have been going up slightly the last few years, you know, we've seen an uptick in motor vehicle permits, we've seen an uptick in building permits. I think obviously, that's a reflection of finally coming out from under the two thousand eight, or whatever you wanna call it, recession. But obviously, the bulk of the money that we get is from general taxation. The state continues to not be helping us, we still don't get revenue sharing, we still don't get the forty percent that we were promised on Meals and Rooms. Yes, they tossed us a bone this year, they gave us that free money for us, it was what I about ninety-eight thousand dollars, you know, but not to look a gift horse in the mouth, as my mother would say, but then they attached all kinds of rules to it. Why do that? Just give us the money. So that money's still sitting in the bank, we'll probably spend it on paving projects this year. There is another revenue source that the town could tap into, and maybe the board wants to talk about this, it'd be a Warren article, it's a highway maintenance fund, and you can collect up to five percent of the motor vehicle registrations. You can't collect it on motorcycles, trailers, or antique vehicles. I spoke with Linda, we might be able to get another twenty thousand dollars a year, and that would be twenty thousand dollars that we would have to spend, again, on highway and road maintenance items.
So that would be like an added tax, so when you register your car?
Call it a tax, call it a fee.
Okay.
Yes, okay, yep, yep. Now, I mean, one might argue, well, really, it's just another tax, obviously, but I just put it out there as if it is something that we are not currently doing.
This is something that we would be charging to the people that were registering vehicles, or is this a-
No, it's, we would be charging it to people who register vehicles, yes.
And what is it?
I take that that it's not, it's not five percent, it's five dollars. You can charge up to five dollars.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Five percent's a kicker.
What's it called? Like, what is it for?
It's called the, would be a capital reserve fund, the Municipal and Transportation Improvement Fee. RSA two sixty-one, one fifty-three, six.
So when I go in to register my car, what's it called?
Five dollars.
Five dollars.
Five dollar fee, five dollar additional fee for registering my car this year.
Oh, we used to have a head tax, right?
Right.
That's what I was wondering. Could it be called something that people would be like, oh, okay, I guess I have to... Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Municipal and Transportation Improvement.
Head tax, well, that's what it was, right?
It's a car tax. Each car you own?
Other than that, I'm not really aware of any other revenue sources that we could look for.
I'm sorry, what did you say that money could be used for specifically this year?
Municipal and Transportation Improvement Fund, so you could use it to pave the roads. If we wanted to do something with transportation, we could, I'm not sure what we would do entirely, but we could do something. If we wanted to have a trolley, we could people from point A to point B, I would suspect we would just use it for road maintenance.
Sure.
So again, I think I calculated, we might get about another twenty thousand a year.
You've estimated registration is-
Yep, yep.
So it's something that a lot of them, they used to do, any idea of it?
I don't know whether a lot of them do it, I know some of them do it.
But town meeting would have to vote on that?
Yes, uh, yes. You'd have to have a public hearing, and then you'd have to have a Warren article with a majority vote, and then it could be effective immediately if you wanted it to.
With the modifications that you've had associated with all the finances, what's the percentage increase from last year?
I actually didn't calculate that after I ran the new personnel numbers, but before that, it was, I think, three-point-four, so it's gotta be under three percent.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
It's gotta be under three percent. But that doesn't count, that doesn't account for the forty-five thousand dollars, so it's actually, but then you gotta add back in the library, so it's probably about even, maybe a little higher.
At the meeting where we had the agencies come in, we had a discussion Scott was talking about, thinking it was a, the town didn't wanna fund the agencies that got money from the town, but where does that discussion come from?
There is nothing in the guidelines that talks about that, so there's certainly no prohibition that I'm aware of. As it turns out, there are only two agencies that are funded.
Meals on Wheels, I see.
It wasn't CAP, it was, shoot, I can't remember. No, it wasn't CAP, it was something else. Child and Family Services, maybe? And the Meals on Wheels, it's, as she explained, it's not the portion that she's asking us to fund, they get money from the county for people who are under sixty years of age but disabled.
Does anybody have any idea what the building plans are for Beaverton? I hear all kinds of rumors about the old Cheney property, the maybe Cheney property, maybe not Cheney property anymore, off of Route one twenty-five, kind of between one twenty-five and the Newtown Plains Road.
I know there's been talk about that, but I don't know that it's reached the level of the planning board.
No, right now, there's a development going in behind the pit. There's a development going in there. I thought you got permission.
Not totally, I don't think it's totally gone through.
Okay, 'cause I asked Karen, because the lot that's next to the road is the lot that we gave the information to, the school.
Middle School, yeah.
You were the flat place, where it's cleared off?
Yeah, but it's usually lower out there.
Yeah.
But it's behind that, it's behind, it would be off Pinkham Road, our access is off Pinkham Road. I don't remember how many houses in there, but...
Cut thirty-six.
It's nice to see Andy, as Cheney has sold that.
He sold the back part.
The back part.
The front part is still here.
It's commercial, isn't it? The front part is in the commercial zone.
Piece of it, part of it, piece of it's in commercial zone.
It's all wet, well, some of it's wet. Five acres, seventeen acres, five of it's nice, the rest of it's wet.
Well, he dug so deep that-
Oh.
Dug a little too deep in there.
The water table, he was in the water.
Good.
Gotta bring it filled up, probably back up where it was.
So are there any other questions about the budget, revenues?
I have.
Sure?
So, first page, professional audit, that's still the same? I thought it went up each year a little bit. A bigger, 'cause we're in year two, I think, aren't we?
I, I will double check it, I'm pretty sure I've looked at the contract, so I can double check.
All right, I just thought there was a, some kind of escalation in terms of something. That was my first question. Second one, in terms of the pay notification, the fifteen-five is based on if everybody took-
Yes.
That is eligible, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Next question. Can you, one of the things that the ABC should probably know about is in terms of what we did, in terms of putting salaries in the budget, do you wanna go over, ever in terms of you wanna put it in the budget that gets presented, so there's those-
Yes, yes, thank you.
Did you talk to him about that?
So I have requested of the Select Board, and the board adopted a performance evaluation, merit policy, whatever we wanna call it, to shift the timing of when we do performance evaluations and when pay increases get decided, to coincide with the budget. So in other words, what I would like the Select Board to do is, after all of the budget presentations, as part of their deliberations, make a decision relative to any merit raises or COLAs, so that the budget that gets presented at the deliberative session already has all of the wages distributed.
In lieu of that forty-five?
In lieu of that forty-five, it would make it, first off, I think it's much more transparent to the voters, what employees are being paid and what the money is being used for, but it would make it a lot easier for all of us going forward, instead of having to remember, oh, wait, that's the budget of the deliberative session, that's not really the budget, and then everybody, and that's not the budget I submitted, and it's not the budget of deliberative session. It would be a different budget. So hopefully, we're gonna be able to achieve that this year, so that the budget that goes to the deliberative session, which is the budget that goes to the ballot, really is the budget going forward, assuming that it passes. That reminded me of something else, so I don't know if you've made note, but as we've gone through this, there have been a couple of changes to the budgets that were presented, obviously, including the one that I did tonight with the GMRs. So my intent is to, after, I think we have one more meeting with budget presentations on the thirtieth, after that meeting, I'm gonna collect all of those changes and then present you all with another complete budget that has all of those changes in it, and so that will be the one that you can deliberate on.
Wow, that's great.
Can you help me with something in terms of the health insurance? I'm looking at the three hundred and seventy-five, eighty-eight, and totaling that out on the page you have on the summary for health, health insurance. That comes to three ninety-four, I assume the difference is the new police officer, or I guess, what is in that three seventy?
What is in the three seventy and here?
Five eighty-eight, yeah, because this totals three ninety-four, nine eighty. I assume the difference is the annual payment?
Well, that's why I kept these numbers down here, I tried to show what my calculation was, but I guess it was maybe not crystal clear.
Okay.
So the health insurance line includes the health insurance and the short-term, long-term disability and life insurance.
Okay.
And then it nets out the library.
Okay. So-
And the three ninety-four that you're referring to, the bottom ranked number?
Yep.
That's the total of the health insurance and the dental.
Okay.
So if you look at these numbers under here, the medical net is actually three seventy-five, one fifty-seven.
So it's all the current employees that have health insurance, you have the placeholder for one family plan, and then you have one in there for the new police officer that the chief requested.
Correct.
All right.
We haven't seen the fire department, is he asking, do we know yet? He's hadn't asked for something?
Comes next, well, his budget request.
Right, I don't believe he's asking for initial people.
He is, or he is not.
I don't, I don't think he is.
He has a couple of issues.
Yeah. She just passed out tonight, it's right there. She'll be in a minute.
Julie, the orders are correct, we just didn't follow this. The three ninety-four, nine eighty, sixty-two, you should not ask for your library's money.
It does.
It does, it will.
It does.
Thank you.
Yep.
It's for a fact.
So do, do you think people will get that money during the budget for the Warren article?
Which one?
The forty, the salaries, do you think you get those salary changes, Julie?
I very much hope so. I will definitely be pushing the Select Board-
I can feel the heat.
-to do that.
It'll be that much more accurate.
It also makes it difficult, you know, we have to report numbers, obviously, to our auditors, we have to report numbers to the DRA, and they, they just, they don't ever match up.
Yeah.
So it just-
And you're always trying to remember what the differences are.
And we're always trying to remember, oh, wait, that's right, we did this, and this, and this.
Yep.
Yeah. It's just all part of the evolution to try to, believe it or not, streamline, make more efficient, make easier the budget process.
We certainly have more information this year earlier than we ever can.
Right, you never used to get this.
Maybe more accurate.
I hope so. Any questions? No?
Good.
I'm good.
Everybody's good?
All good.
Looking at the meeting for the thirtieth, it'd be quite a meeting.
Although, is the CIP coming?
Yes, actually, you know, I saw something the other day where she scheduled the meeting for that night.
I think they are not, but you may wish to check with Karen.
Sure. We'll be starting at six, in anticipation of that, so-
Let me see if I can-
Yeah.
Clarify that, though. If we don't see them that night, does that mean we won't see them?
We have the two other meetings scheduled, you can only have another meeting, if you want.
Well, that's in, the CIP is only, how do I say it? We don't really deal with the CIP, it's only that we know about the CIP. Our discussions about the operational budget should not be-
And then not my sworn into trust, with the CIP. Besides, I always find it very informative.
Oh, I find it, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I had thought at one time he said he was gonna give a presentation, so I-
As far as I know, I hadn't heard otherwise, so... So is that, could you ask Karen?
Ask Karen, yeah.
Well, Karen will be here anyways, I guess, she's listed here.
We put an hour and a half slotted for the CIP.
See, it took about that long last year, didn't it? Took a long time.
It took a long time.
Yeah, it did, yeah. Well, he makes a formal presentation with PowerPoints and stuff.
Spreadsheets that stretch across the table.
So did everybody have a chance to read the minutes of October nineteenth?
Yeah.
And got the motion to accept, or whatever?
Someone said to me-
All in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Opposed?
None.
All right, I signed it. You have to sign it, John.
Yes.
So why did we think the select board's budget was going to take so much time?
It used to take a lot of time. There's a lot to talk about.
Now it's all spelled out, and it's all right there.
Yeah.
Also, we're mostly talking about changes, and the changes are pretty many.
Yeah.
So do we have anything else on our agenda? Are we ready for a motion for adjournment? In a second.
It was quick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed can stay here, right?
Well, the ABC can stay and discuss all they want, right?
Right, exactly.
Doesn't select go and get the heck out?
Remind me, what's CIP saying for our capital improvement? We've both been doing that, what?
Capital improvement.
So is that, all the new buildings and all that?
I know.
It's all the.
Yeah?
It's all the existing stuff there.
It's anything over five thousand, anything over five thousand dollars.
It lasts three years or more.
To improve any of the town buildings?
Equipment?
They schedule that, they get these schedules. So we bought a fire truck here, it's going to have a twenty-year life, so it'll be twenty years.
Bridge monies.
So that's how we figure out.
All the crews. Oh, wow.
And they're all volunteers.
The level of detail was amazing.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The only, the only problem with it is that because of the discussions about the building, they haven't really done anything with existing buildings, so that portion.
Which we've asked them to lay out when new furnaces need to be put in, when new roofs need to be put in.
They haven't done, in prior years, they haven't, they've only done minimal amounts of that.
Well, I mean, are we or aren't we going to get a CIP presentation?
We don't, we don't know.
We don't know. I mean, I don't see how you can have a budget meeting and not have anything from the CIP.
I would agree with you, I'm sorry.
Well, let's see what he has to say, and if he can't make it for some reason.
Well, Karen can provide summaries.
Yeah, sure.
We don't really need to go through the stretchy thing and the logistics, so I would be interested all the time.
Just need a summary sheet, a listing of different trusts.
Did you say because of the town center project that, that things haven't been?
The bill, the CIP for the buildings is not really kept up the way the other departments are. Like, he doesn't really schedule out when a building needs a furnace, or when a building's expected to be. He's kind of let those, that part of CIP go because he said, you know, we're going to be doing major renovations, why should, this is going to be superseded. So he's, but I think he expected that we would have come to some decision some time ago. So it's actually been quite a while that we've had a business agreement.
I thought that sort of stuff was laid out in the stuff we saw last year.
Not really, the buildings. There might, he might have, are the furnaces in there, John, or John?
At one time, they did furnaces, but, well, obviously, furnace in this building and a couple of the other ones that were not being modified.
Here's Karen's answer. I asked, is the CIP presenting to the ABC on November thirtieth? They should, but Bob Smith isn't committing to it yet. So I don't know what that means.
Choice of all tiers.
If, at this point, communicate back.
Is he someone we hired?
If he's not committing to it, at least provide us with a summary statement.
It's volunteers.
Oh, right.
All volunteers.
The TCBC is meeting on the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth of this month. So that's getting started.
Good.
We have a sixth member, well, kind of. He wants to come and check it out, and he thinks he'll join, but we'll see. I think he will.
Good.
Wants to get his people in first, I think.
All right, since Scott did bring more candy balls, this will do. I can't give you any to begin with, it's an hour.
Is there, is there anybody, does anyone?